We're live.
Yes.
I hope we're live.
Well, we are alive, at least, even if we're not live, hopefully we are. And the time is 6:32 on December 19th for this Select Board meeting. I'll open it as we usually do. We'd like to welcome you.
I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. So Dave Hemmer, Chair of the Select Board.
Marla Herrick.
Norme Blake. And that moves us on to our announcements. Do we have any?
I have an announcement that, it's a bridge announcement, but we'll talk about White Plains in a bit. But I did hear from the engineer for Close Pin Bridge. And he, they have hired an appraiser to go about pricing the right-of-ways and/or the land acquisitions that we need to do. He has a lot of experience. He says that we'll be in touch once all the pieces come together, but wanting you to update so you can likewise update the board. To that end, we assume that you or someone with the town will want to attend the property owner meetings. Yes, that would be a good idea. So I guess it's just nice to hear from the engineer that they're doing something.
Yeah, it is nice.
And hopefully, at some point, and I've asked him if I could know when this would be, that there'll be contact with people.
What's his name?
The appraiser. His name is Chip Johnson.
Chip.
He used to work for the Department of Transportation as a right-of-way supervisor in right-of-way acquisition and relocation.
Oh, good.
So I guess he knows.
Yeah, something, yeah, right. Good.
So that's my announcement.
Okay. Does the board have any announcements?
Happy holidays. Can't wait till it's over.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays, happy new year, because in theory, we won't see you until the new year.
That's right.
So we'll see you next year.
All right. We actually, just to throw water on your bubble, we still are going to need to meet at some point to do the, what's the word I'm looking for?
Encumbrances.
Encumbrances. So that will probably be next week sometime.
Could that be after Christmas? It probably could be.
Yeah, oh, yes.
Sounds next week, Dee.
We're supposed to do it before the new year.
Okay, okay, yep.
I spoke with both Steve and Emmett today and to get.
Dee, I'll point that out because I said something to somebody and they said, "Well, that's a holiday." I'm like, "Oh, shit, that's Christmas."
Well, see, thank you.
So.
All right.
I'll put in that the other thing that I should mention to you is that your meeting, Monday is a holiday, New Year's holiday, so I would propose that you meet on the third, which is a Tuesday.
I think that's in our policy, that we meet the Tuesday after.
It is, but I'm just.
And that is in the new meeting schedule that I posted.
About a little reinforcement.
Thank you.
Mainly for myself, sort of, in the show.
You started the topic, and it's the first of all business of White Plains.
Well, today I received, we had gotten, as you know, quotes for the invert at White Plains last year. And last year, the quote was ninety-six thousand, ninety-six thousand nine eighty. And he told me that I could expect a ten percent or so increase. So this is the quote I got today, and it is pretty close to ten percent. It's one oh five, five thirty. Chad has reported that he has the necessary permits and all the approvals that were needed. He and Emmett were discussing, we had talked at one time about Emmett doing the dirt work and that type of work. Emmett has decided that he would not, that he thinks we should hire a contractor because of the deep watering of the. If that's the case, Chad will draw up the RFP, Request for Proposals, to be sent to contractors who have the capability to do the job, and Chad knows who those people are. He will also conduct a pre-bid meeting to have them review the site and explain what we want. And in his, in the contract that you had signed with him some time ago, there was a provision that they would charge a hundred dollars an hour for oversight of construction. And he estimates that would probably be about two thousand dollars total. So the cost of the invert, the culvert, the contractor, the oversight. Hopefully, we had talked about when we would get the culvert. He thought maybe by the end of December, but I think that's a little highly unlikely, so. And maybe I misunderstood him, too. The pre-bid meeting, maybe the second week of January, and the RFP released. I guess the RFP would be first. And then first of February bids return, and Mitchie will review them and make a recommendation to you. And then maybe we can get the job done through the summer.
You've got a nice idea.
And I might be off on that as far as my timeline, but.
We don't see you before then.
Okay.
All right.
So the, what I'd like to note tonight, if you okay this quote, so I can let them know to go ahead.
We are covered money-wise. We have money in, for this.
Yes.
So we don't have to, not going to affect the tax.
It's in the trust fund.
Right, so it's not going to affect the tax rate or anything, so that's good.
No, not right now.
We can actually get things done in a bit, yes. So this is the updated quote to what had previously been the least expensive quote of the quotes that had been requested when the project was started. Now we have all of the engineering done, so we can actually use the quote. So I think we're okay to just move forward with the updated quote since we already did the quotes and requests.
We did, yeah.
And the ten percent is very reasonable, in the sense of all the costs.
I don't think anyone's surprised.
Especially considering how long it's been.
Well, true.
I'm surprised it's only ten percent.
Well, I think that's what I, I think that's what I'm also alluding to.
Yeah, the previous one was November 5th of last year.
Yeah. And you, and you had got free quotes back then.
I think we only got two because there are only two companies that really, it's, I mean, not everyone does this.
Well, no, I know that, yeah, yeah.
Requested as many quotes as possible.
People would get, but you got another one, and this one looked good, so, yeah. So what are we going to do to send it?
I think we just approve.
If you approve it, I can sign a quote and just fax it over, I mean, email or fax it over.
So I would say I make a motion to accept Mitchie Corp.'s quote on the box culvert for White Plains. Ro, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, that one went out for me.
What do we need to do to move forward beyond this? Whether it's, do we talk with Emmett regarding whether he's doing it or doing a bid?
No.
Or whether Mitchie's going to be doing the actual bid and proposal? Like, what do we need to do?
Right now, that Mitchie is planning to put out the bid spec and handle contractors for us. I can have Emmett come talk with you, but.
No. I thought he kind of already agreed anyways, didn't he?
If that's been the consensus from both of them, then it is Emmett's domain to be able to say that that's how it needs to happen.
Emmett was very amenable to that, and he also thought it was best for the town. While Emmett certainly could do that work, the deep watering is the part that would be, that would be the problem. He would have had to hire a subcontractor. And the beauty is with this, if you have a contractor doing the deep watering, it's a problem. It's not our problem.
Right.
You've got to figure it out.
Plus, plus, the machinery size that will be used will, would be a little different, so it may go quicker. Not that Emmett couldn't do a good job doing it, it might have just taken a little bit longer.
Might be, the coordination might be a little.
Yeah, I mean, they got big, they got big stuff.
Right.
We can keep Emmett busy other places.
Well, that's why I think he's probably even thinking himself.
While they would have already seen and commented on the engineering side of it, I would simply suggest that when the request for proposal is ready to go out, that that also be sent to the Conservation Commission so that they are fully aware and can make comments back to the engineer if they deem fit.
Okay. I will speak to our engineer about that.
So whenever it's ready and they're going to put it out, just send a copy to them as well.
Okay.
So that way, everybody's informed and knows what's going on. All right. So is there anything further for White Plains?
No, that's the update in White Plains. I'm happy to say I think it's going in the right direction.
I'm very happy to say we're finally getting a replacement.
Yeah.
All right, so that moves us on to our other old business of the budget.
So I'm sorry I don't have the whole budget finished for you to review again tonight, but the CIP committee met last Thursday, and Marla was there.
Well, the planning board, I mean, I didn't meet with them, but we all.
The planning board and, and of course, the sub, they met anyway. So they came up with their suggestions, and this is the chart of suggestions. There are a few changes from what you've done before. One was to increase the amount that was put aside for emergency apparatus. That went from sixty thousand to a hundred twenty-five thousand, sixty-five thousand to a hundred twenty-five thousand. They also reduced the highway and road capital reserve by twenty-five thousand. They increased the town hall general improvements by ten thousand, that's because I was talking to them about the painting. They put, they increased the town office fund by three thousand for eight thousand. We were talking about a coffee machine. And the, another increase is the transfer station. Maybe we've talked about that before, but as you know, we're expecting higher expenses from the transfer station this year than we had been aware of.
Well, no, I think by the way it was sounding, like we knew it was coming, but there was certain reports that might have thought, well, we'll wait till they say it. I don't know.
Well, that could be.
That's what I kind of heard.
Yeah, that, that, that could be. I mean, I think.
I don't think it's a total surprise.
I think we all agree that we need to figure out how to talk with them better.
Right.
If, not that, and I don't mean this the way it's going to sound, but I don't know how else to put it. It's not really, our say is not going to change at all.
No. We really don't have much say that we want to share.
Right. And we are getting a very good deal. So I have put that on your, on your capital reserve things, so you'll see how it affects. On the left side of the capital reserve funds, last year, the total capital reserve you raised, three sixty-four, five hundred. This year, with the proposed changes, it's four forty-five, five, which is an increase of eight one thousand. And the right side, which is the expendable trust funds, is an increase of five thousand, which is in the technology fund, from five to ten. Those are the recommendations from the CIP committee.
Regarding the roads, I know, I think it was the last time we had the report from you saying how much we've used in the year for them.
So that's the rundown of everything but the.
Okay, thank you. So let's see, we used out of highways and roads, we used a hundred twenty-seven and a half K this year, and preservation ninety-eight point three. So we have a little over two in total. Actually, about, about two twenty-five, basically on the nose, total between the two. And so if we look at recommendation of highways and roads, there's seven, hundred thousand and two hundred. Okay, so, yeah, we're still, we're still fine there to do more than we've actually used. And I think that's good because there's, I think, a lot of, a fair amount of catch-up to be done for road work.
Emmett did make the point, and I guess it's not a surprise to anybody. Obviously, he can't do the same amount of work for the same amount of money he pays. So it's, and he gave the footages that, it could be, I don't have those in my head, but it was.
I think he was saying, like, I'm just going to round down, but a thousand feet compared to.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred, is what I remember. And, you know, more or less saying that what we, what the cost for a thousand feet would cost you, no, what it would cost you to do fifteen hundred feet now is you can only do a thousand feet.
He had, I mean, he had a lot of different roads in his head, and we are trying to, I mean, I think the thing is, Russ and I were talking a little bit about this, is to have them all down and see what we can do to prioritize them, because, you know.
And that was a big request from the CIP.
And the CIP really wanted that.
Yeah.
And I think that's the way, that's the way to do it. But it was just, we were going in several different directions for a while.
Yeah. Just, just so that, I mean, I mean, I mean, we want to give money to everybody that needs it, and we want our roads to be perfect, but if there's ones that can wait, because this is needed instead, then.
Well, I, I look at it twofold. One is that you don't want to end up with roads that cost you way more because you didn't take care of them.
Absolutely.
And the second is that there is a limited amount of time and capability of.
To start them out.
To go do it. Like, we couldn't tell him, "We do all the roads this year."
Even if you had all the money.
Even if we had all the money.
That's right, no, I agree.
So, but making sure that there is enough that's there to definitely handle the catch-up amounts that he's trying to do, because there's a fair amount that's still in the funds, plus we're adding more than was used. I think that's actually correct. I think we should be doing that, because it's going to cost more to do the same amount. And hopefully, we can continue to be doing more than we have been in the past. So that would be very nice.
I would think if we're doing White Plains Road and all, we'd still need more money to kind of tar, tower up the, both sides of that road going into the bridge, too.
So the, it depends on how that's handled. If it's all like we're changing the road and stuff because of the bridge and as part of the same engineering project, and it's all going out to bid, all of that would come out of the bridges and culverts capital reserve fund.
Oh, okay.
If it's.
Is it going to tie that into that?
If it's, we've done this, and now we want to finish off the rest of the road that's going there because it needs help, too.
Right.
Then that'll come out of these funds.
Okay, all right.
To me, that seems the trickiest part of it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, right.
It's like, oh, I got money here, but all of that doesn't fall there.
But the, yeah, we've, we've got the appropriate things there. And looking at their, what else?
Now, with Close Pin Bridge Road, we, because we're going to get money from the state or feds, we might be able to do a little more tarring and stuff because of that.
Kind of ask that question, too, but that's a little.
Well, I'm, it would be harder because the feds are involved.
Well, it might be harder. No, but I'm thinking the fact that they, we had, didn't we have money set aside? And now they're picking up hundred percent. Where does that money that we had set aside go?
We have approximately, I guess, five hundred thousand dollars in that account. And I think when we're done with White Plains.
Is that all that's in it?
Maybe it's a little more than that, but.
The last figure I had was seven hundred sixty-three thousand.
Oh, really? Okay, well, good.
It was a family that came by.
I'm sorry.
We've probably paid a, we've probably paid one or two engineering bills since then.
But they haven't.
To VHB.
Okay, well, I, that kind of, I'm glad to hear that because I'm thinking that we probably should really plan on the worst-case scenario for White Plains, and I hope it does not more, four hundred thousand by the time we're done. That we also have to pay for the engineering for Close Pin Bridge. We also will need to buy property or, and easements.
Oh, that's true. That's not covered.
For that. So I dare not say how much that would be, but I would say that's probably going to be two hundred to two fifty for a total. Of course, we've been paying right along with the, with the engineering. And the rest, you're right, the feds are going to cover the construction and the bridge.
So it just depends on how much road they're going to cover with the bridge.
Yeah.
And who will, so, because I, because I was just thinking the whole, because we've had to sell a little bit of property before. And I think it was with, I think Chip did it, actually, for the state. That's why the name was ringing about. So they have what, it's, they have like a general thing to go by, so it's, it shouldn't be, I mean, some of our inflated numbers lately, I don't, it sounds like to me that, that you've got to give them fair market value, but.
Exactly. It's, 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 it's not.
It's been a good deal for both.
I'm hoping there's not a lot of negotiation as far as, I've also been involved in something like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's kind of like they had a flat rate.
Yep.
Of what they were going to pay you, and it was easier to do it rather than try and play it.
Yes, I know, yes.
Fortunately, they're handling that because of the federal portion.
Oh, absolutely.
Otherwise, we would be different.
Oh. Well, we're not.
And that can be, you know, I think that can be somewhat tricky.
Yeah.
But.
So.
I'm sure Dee will tell us when they contact her about it.
Right. So where, so where is, as you don't, we don't know, where is this number of what we do have?
For which?
For the.
For the, in the trust fund?
No, the trust, yeah.
In the trust fund? The trustees will have the balance, and I'm sorry I didn't bring it up with you, but I could, I can tell you what it is or not. If you'd like, I'll email it to you. And if I forget, remind you.
That number would have been from whatever I got last in.
The last thing I think.
It's either end of October or end of November is when that number's from.
Yeah. October, I think, is where she is now, the end of October.
So it'd be a little more, but.
It just makes it fun to guess.
It would be a little bit less than that, well, there'd be interest, but then it'd be a little less.
It will be more because we haven't funded that.
Oh, and then we, then we fund it.
That's waiting to be funded.
So it'll probably be, it'll probably be roughly eight hundred thousand that's sitting in it. So it should roughly cover the two bridges in total across the whole set of projects. The amount that they're suggesting be put in it is the same, which is the seventy-five thousand. And we've been doing random culvert work out of it, too. So I think that's appropriate, and then whatever's left over, then, once we get more discussion with Boskyn about when that bridge will be.
Oh, yeah.
Out in the future, that can show up on the CIP in an appropriately small amount to go into that funding.
CIP asked about that, too.
I have to say that Emmett did a really good on the culverts by us, did a really good job on those. They look with the stone, you know, really classy, so it better last another hundred years, which probably will, unless the river gets high, which you never know.
It's the hope.
Yes.
It is the hope.
So what were we going to do if we hadn't got all the money?
Well, I mean, you would have had to decide how you were going to get it.
Yeah.
You know? Whether you would appropriate a special warrant article for it, whether you would bond it, the variety of ways that you could do it.
Most likely.
Of which, none of what really you want to do.
No.
You know?
No, and that was.
And I think the town's fortunate, and it was foresight of the town fathers and the citizens to establish these accounts.
Yeah. That is, that makes a big difference.
To save money for rainy day.
I know some other towns that don't do that, and all of a sudden, they get these gigantic bills.
Yeah.
So we are really, we've been doing it ever since I've been here fifty years, so doing it like that, a long time.
So the other, obviously, there's not much we can do about the transfer station, which is the largest other increase besides fire department vehicles, which makes sense because that, that's been being said repeatedly for several years now that there was going to need to be more, but that just wasn't recommended.
I'm sorry, I was thinking of the fire, the, the five hundred thousand is what's in the fire.
Ah, yes.
That's where I'm, I'm just trying to figure.
Which we still haven't got our tanker truck, the new one, yet.
No, no, so, I mean, obviously, by the time we're done with that, Emmett's now estimating that a new truck will be like nine hundred thousand, I think he said. Although you don't know.
We don't, yeah. I, I, yeah. I, I mean, the thing, the thing that.
But that's what we have to use for, you know, planning unless we want to draw a bill later.
I guess, I.
Yes, I mean, there's, there's certain things that, you know, is, just like what's happening with this delay, I mean, how long ago did we put in to get a new fire truck that's still not here? What do we, are we, it's a couple of years.
Two, three.
I don't know, about a, two, three, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I, also, I think it is important to have what we need, but I also feel that, thank God, we don't have a lot of, you know, like, like, when you think about updating equipment and doing things, it's the usage of it, too.
Yes.
Okay? So, granted, that's not totally planned, and I do think it's good to plan to, but I guess what I'm going to say, in my opinion, is, is I wouldn't, I wouldn't be in a panic to, you know, throw our whole budget off, too, too, because I feel like we are getting an updated one. Good news is we, they, they don't have tons of fires they have to go to. It could change. I'm not saying, I'm just saying.
And our present equipment, while it's older, it's in good shape.
Well, and it's, and it's in a controlled environment, like, a lot of times, other equipment, you know, like in our cases, outside, or the sun's beating on it, or, that'd be tire-wise, or, you know, sun doesn't hurt or anything, paint, but, you know, it's.
Distrains your paint pretty quick.
Yeah, that's right. But what my point is, is it, is we're fortunate to have a nice fire station to house the stuff in, and it's being, it's able to be kept up. Sometimes nowadays, with equipment, we find even some of the older stuff works better than the newer stuff.
Yes, yeah.
Sorry, just, but not that we shouldn't plan for it, I just am trying to say that even like when you go buy a new truck compared to what you're rebuilding a truck, like, they used to call them gliders, right? And it's because there's so much fun stuff in our society of what you have to do to meet all these rules, so if you have a glider, you don't run the stables. So what my point is, is.
Unfortunately, certification mixes a lot of that.
Well, it's probably true, but I'm not, and I'm not saying that I could be all, I could be wrong about that, because, but I don't know where the fire truck, I'm just saying, I think our town does a good job keeping them taken care of, too. He does the maintenance that's needed. Emmett does a great job making sure that everything is kept up to par.
That means a lot, too.
Well, I mean, I think you have a steady, you're gaining steadily, maybe you're not paying for the whole thing at once, but, and I'm not sure when we're getting our new truck.
I know. Well, it's supposed to be two, a year, at least a year.
You know, it's, it's, Emmett talks to the salesman, and it's always, I don't know, which ass is missing.
Yeah, some of the excuses are quite interesting, but anyhow.
You know, but any.
I don't even know, they're not, probably not excuses, they're probably real, but it's what the society.
And I, and I believe it, I think, I think. And I and I believe that I think I think.
Yeah, absolutely, me too. I didn't mean it that way.
Getting fire equipment.
Well, hard time.
Like everything else.
Right, no, I mean, I mean, like sometimes there's a shortage of.
Of everything.
Everything.
You go to the grocery store and you got a whole shop.
What antibiotics? Can you imagine having a short? Have you ever ever heard of a shortage of antibiotics?
Yeah, that's kinda crazy. Why don't people start planning ahead? So.
Well, that's what we're trying to do, so I'll stop you up.
But I have a question. How come the Hopkins and Transfer Station went up so much? Are they planning on doing some big things?
Trailers.
Trailers. They're they're replacing their trailers.
So they don't plan for this like three years in advance? It's like, okay, this year we're all gonna jump.
No, according to one of the people that was.
Barbara.
Barbara, yeah. She said that we knew this was coming, but I don't know. That's just what she said. She said.
I didn't.
I didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I didn't either.
I don't know.
Last year when we asked them that.
Well, actually, no, I.
We knew one was coming up.
We knew there was a trailer coming, but that was that was this year and we've already paid for it, right?
Not yet, no.
But we didn't get here.
Okay.
Yet.
But that was that was what was supposed to be being accounted for in the existing CIP budget.
Yeah.
So I guess there's another one that's needed now.
I guess so.
Rather than when I had talked briefly with the people at the transfer station, as I tend to try to do to be informed. They had said they were opportunistically trying to get the second one because they could get a better deal when they bought two. But then this year they did only buy one because the price of steel went through the roof, so they couldn't buy two.
Also in that is a packer.
Oh, automatic shoves shoves everything up.
And then there's the building. They're doing that.
They're redoing the building?
I think one of them, I think one of the buildings is set to be redone, it's either this year or next year.
Really? Now, who's on?
I thought about saying they needed to plan for rebuilding the recycling building, but they didn't say they were redoing it like this year. I don't think it's this year. I think this year was the packer and the trailer.
And then next year.
Maybe we should have the people show up at a selectmen's meeting and talk to us. You're working on that?
I'm working on it.
You're also working on the the federal land people, too, right?
Always.
We should we should be seeing those guys.
We're moving along, be very slowly but carefully.
Well, it is kinda nice to have them show ups, you know, once in a while, so.
Exactly, yeah.
I mean, I don't know if they've ever showed up since the last time I was a selectman, which was a long time ago, but it was nice to see them. And what they expected that we should do and, you know, all of that stuff, so. We want them to know that we're still alive and not gonna get them let them get away with anything. I hope.
So do we have any choice on the matter for the transfer station?
Not really.
I don't believe you do.
No.
You want to start your own dump?
No, right, we we did that. We had that one time and no, this is a better system.
I mean, we could show up to their budget hearing or their budget committee meetings or hearings or whatever and voice opinions. But that's really about what it boils down to, cause we're on the hook for what I think it's twenty-five percent.
Yes.
Yeah, which is cheap, really, at the end of the day. But not when they decide when they get stuff.
But it should be more, it should be more forward looking planned instead of, oh, here's a big bill.
Yeah, right, a three year plan or five or whatever, like we're doing.
So, yeah. I wanna touch on the others. You mentioned town hall improvements because of the paint. There is a reasonable amount that's sitting in that, but yes, if we're dealing with the painting, then. That's gonna be a fairly large amount, especially if there's other stuff found.
Which is what we're probably.
Which is the probable cause of needing to repaint so soon.
Will we have any quotes on to repaint?
I would be really curious.
Not recent ones.
Based on. The expectation of finding further issues instead of just painting over them. And then fixing them. Much like the historic society had to do with the old painting house. What we should actually expect for. How much that would cost.
The paint.
Cause this doesn't seem like it would be anywhere near enough to cover fixing a root problem. Versus, it does seem like enough to rip off some boards and repaint, but that's probably not gonna do it.
When I spoke to the paint, the last company that painted this. The the town hall. And I I think that was probably about four or five years ago maybe. And he made it very clear that it should have lasted much longer and there must be some problem. Now, so, yeah, I think we should discover what the problem is. Although I I would think you'd see a problem somewhere else beside this outside, but at any rate.
Do you think you'd see it like inside or something?
You know, I could tell you're not feeling it, um, but. But, you know, he didn't think it should be. It's peeling somewhat badly near the library in that corner there.
Suddenly he's hitting it too much.
The back of the building has siding, has vinyl siding, but the front, the three sides are painted.
I didn't know that.
Maybe that side's mine, too.
Can they all match?
But, you know, and I think at the time it was that people felt they wanted to maintain the historical look of the.
Agreed. Hundred percent, yeah, it's a little less. But I respect. Not when you gotta paint again.
So there's been a lot of work on making stuff look.
Oh, it's looking a lot better.
The same as the historic stuff with new materials.
That's right, and there's even a concrete based. Plaid board that holds paint better.
Yeah.
Too, that's not vinyl.
Yeah.
But you're you're a hundred percent right. Things have come a long ways.
And granted, it's much more expensive, but there's also the, um. It's basically a PVC plastic base, much like say Trex for for decking.
That's right.
Where, you know, you put it up and you paint it and everything else, but it's it's impermeable. It doesn't transfer moisture like wood or concrete does. So even if there are issues, that can fix a lot of it and you paint over the top of it and just like you normally would and it looks like a normal color.
Even vinyl's come a long way. I mean, a lot of stuff's come a long way. It's just.
So it would, yeah, yeah. How how and when do we find out what is the likely actual issue so that we can either address it or have things painted?
I think we need to have someone come after the winter.
Okay.
We uh, we exhausted our town hall budget badly this year, so I didn't.
By what? By doing what?
Oh, just had crazy stuff happen.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Like when we took care of the fire stuff.
Maintenance issues.
Oh, okay.
You know, the fire, the fire suppression system, the the, you know, getting the.
Was the well this year or was that last year?
The well was last year and the trust fund paid for that.
Okay, there was the tree on town hall. That was last year, too.
You know, but but there's been a lot of, you know.
Though I think that was finally fixed this year. I think the roof got fixed this year, wasn't it?
Yeah, it might have been this year was the tree. It's whenever Dana went on vacation last. Happened on like the first day of his vacation.
You know, I leave for five minutes and you're throwing trees on my face.
That's right. On the first day of Dana's vacation, the tree fell on town hall.
It's kinda like when you go on vacation, you call home and your kids go, oh, yeah, well, you know, what about? Okay, so then there's office equipment and technology. Uh, office equipment, I assume, is the.
Well.
Copier.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, that's that's the copier. There is some money.
And what was the rough quote for the copier?
I'm sorry.
What was the rough quote for the copy?
About eight thousand.
Okay.
What's wrong with the one you have now?
Well, that's the point. There isn't anything wrong with it and it's it. I mean, it's it's slow, but at some point it's going to grow.
Really? How many copies have you done?
Now, how about?
Oh, it's pretty high.
How about missing one?
But we have, Phil Tucker told us that he's gonna start having trouble getting parts.
Phil Tucker's a great guy, cause he works at my house. He's terrific, I have to say, so.
And the the second thing that I'll point out, that if you remember back from the document retention stuff. The. What this copier spits out is not the accessible versions that are required by governments and so on and so forth. PDF versions. It's old style PDF, not PDFX and so there's a whole bunch of stuff in there where. It's showing its age both mechanically and capability.
And it has been slowing down recently.
So it still works. We don't need to replace it immediately, uh, but it's, we should definitely expect that it will need to be replaced. Even if that's just because of its capabilities and then maybe it's used as the normal copier and it's sitting in the conference room. Uh, and then or or use it use it as just a printer. Uh, but then other things would go through the newer system, uh, much like we're doing and expecting to do with the fire truck, for example. So we'll see how that shapes out, but. Based on the eight thousand that you mentioned and that the.
It's in the capital reserve.
Uh, office equipment shows that we've got fifteen grand plus sitting there.
Yeah.
And that's what I was gonna point out, Dee, there is a balance in there.
And I know that we've also got the technology fund, cause part of that was that like this could be used for technology and servers and stuff. Or and or other computer equipment, because it is office equipment. But. When we, I'm struggling to find it, I'm struggling to understand the reasoning for an increase of eight thousand if the quota's for eight thousand and we have more than that in there already.
The increase is actually three thousand. We normally put by.
Yeah, it's from five to eight.
Oh, sorry.
And I think the eight thousand came from, cause when I presented my want list to the CIP. I just presented as projects that we wanted to do. So you could cut that down because we have fifteen thousand in there.
What other items that you would expect to go into the office equipment?
Uh, well, I guess I and I have wanted to have the technology people talk to me about computers. And and that, what we need to think about replacing computers and whose computers should be replaced, et cetera, et cetera. That's the only thing that I can think of other than coffee machines and computers.
Okay. And so that goes along with the technology fund?
Now, we did that, um, because when we went, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we went to the CIP and we were mindful of the server at that point.
And I think the last time that we saw a server quote, it was about twenty-two. Grand for the overall hardware plus software upgrades and licensing and the migration and IT time for it. Which is unfortunate that it's that high, but.
And that's a fairly, I mean, that fund's only a few years old. Dave, do you have the figure of what the balance is in front of you?
Uh, the balance that I have in front of me is about twelve grand.
Okay.
Uh, because it had been getting some set aside each time for the server. And then we knocked it down because we weren't gonna replace the server at the time and then we've used that for some of the other, uh, items. And for example, the other new computer that's downstairs, I believe, came out of it. Uh, but there's there's a couple of different items that have come out of it, but, uh, that is what that was for was the, basically the two servers. There's probably going to be some firewall and routing updates that will be coming in the next couple of years, too, that I'm sure the IT folks will tell us about at the same time as you should consider these for computers. Based on what you've told me, I would actually suggest that we not increase. The office equipment line item since there's already and maybe even decrease the office equipment line item. Uh, in the funds, because there's already enough there to cover the copier and then put more in the technology fund. To make sure that if we need the server, it's a hundred percent covered along with the ability to then start looking at the computers in the future. So I think that's a better balance than doing it the the way that's recommended here. But of course, that's just my opinion, so. Open to hearing anything else.
You're more the expert than I am, so I'll take your word.
So what you're saying is move the eight thousand, take it down to three? And move it to technology, to five?
Yeah, so the so.
Is that what you're saying?
The technology has been, uh, in twenty twenty, technology was fifteen because they wanted to put in enough for a server.
Yeah, yeah.
And then it went down to ten, uh, and then it was five last year. And then.
So there's twelve in there now.
And there's somewhere around twelve-ish in there last time I saw it. Uh, so.
We really should know. Why do you think it's changed in case something's come out?
I don't think there's anything.
I don't think there's anything that's come out since this figure.
I'm gonna say we really should know what the.
Cause he's got the balance next to it, but.
Well, I see that.
That'll be from the last report, which I think was end of October.
Okay.
I don't think we've approved anything coming out of the technology fund since then, but. So it's somewhere around the the twelve, uh, that's in there. And then the ten that is suggested to go in, uh, would in theory roughly cover a a server. Would not cover if, uh, an additional or newer computer was used. Uh, but then again, with the office equipment already having the fifteen grand plus sitting in it. Uh, and the copier only being quoted at around eight, uh, then. I think like we can always take an office computer out of that, too, if we need to. But I might suggest that instead of bumping up the office equipment to eight thousand from five thousand. Actually decrease it to like twenty-five hundred or some or two thousand, cause we basically have what we need. And then put the extra, put another two thousand or so into the technology fund.
So more or less take, take the eight, leave twenty twenty-five hundred, give two to technology.
Mm-hmm.
And.
That way, technology's a little bit higher.
And then five goes away. I didn't know if I did the math right, but.
Yeah, the extra goes away.
I'm with that. That's what I, that's what I. You're giving a little, but we don't need to give that much.
Yeah, cause it like if the if the copier were, say, a twenty thousand dollar thing, that'd be different.
You're fine. I totally get it. No, I think I think Dee's on board with us.
Yeah, I'm there.
And I think, you know, you're giving a little bit.
Twenty thousand dollar copier.
Is is there other office?
Well, she doesn't need one, okay.
Beyond the computers, because both the the copiers, the computers, the server, all of that can actually come out of either of these. Um, so beyond the computers, what else might, uh, have you been thinking about for office equipment?
That's really all I really have in my mind. I mean, there is a coffee machine in Michelle's office. That I think used to be in the the main office and I've even heard she's having trouble with it, so it's.
Well, she really uses our copy.
You know, um, but I mean, that's the only really other piece of equipment that I can think of that might be.
I think that's a desktop one, too.
It's a smaller one.
She's with the scanner on.
It's a smaller one.
Okay.
So so you're gonna take, you're gonna drop the top, the town office equipment to twenty-five hundred and then how much you're gonna do the technology fund to for?
Uh, tw- twelve.
Twelve, okay.
At least that was my suggestion.
Okay, no, that's good. That's good.
It makes sense.
Sound, I mean, you guys are using the stuff every day, so please tell me if.
No, I think I think that's fine. We do have.
And that'll put us off to a safe place with server in case it kicks it and then.
And also if we need to do something quick for.
There are so many variables with, you know, with trying to explain this and I don't know, you know, um. Next year, I think with CIP. Maybe we need to really, um. Go into what is in the actual fund, which we did, but.
Yeah.
But I think that I'm not sure how well it was understood and so I will, if I'm still working.
You better be still working.
We'll do that, but, um. But I think that by that change that you suggest, I don't think it's gonna. But I think that by that change that you suggest, I don't think it's gonna harm us.
No.
Okay, so.
Also, um. I just, I just wanted to point out that you've got a warrant article coming up for the dam, ten thousand. And I don't know how you're gonna handle the historical society if they ask for, um. Last year, they asked for five thousand.
Cause we've, we've mentioned that, we've talked a few times about different ways that that can be handled. I don't think we've ever made a decision on how we really wanna handle it. So what do you think?
Whoa. Slow down there, Charlie.
So what are they doing with the?
What did we talk about last?
I was looking, how much are we doing for the, have they asked for how much they want for the historical society?
They, they want money in the budget every year, right? Without doing a warrant on it, right?
They would rather we put it in the operating.
Yes.
And they would like it to be roughly, whether it's warrant article based or the, or in the budget, they'd like it to be basically the five thousand because that's what covers their insurance for the building.
Right, okay.
And then anything that's donated is, actually projects are taken care of stuff as opposed to, we just have to pay this.
But the one thing I think it's good to have it in a warrant article, it gets people thinking about the historical society, the building, you know, keeping it in front of somebody's mind that.
Well, you'd hope how much they appreciate it.
Right, go visit and all that stuff.
I understand what you're saying.
So that's, that's just, it's a PR thing, it's a, you know.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
But that's, yeah, cause it's, it gets buried in the budget.
Well, and some people don't, you know, like even till I was doing this, I just thought, oh, that's a beautiful building. Unfortunately, a lot of times you don't think, oh, how does that getting paid for?
Well, that's, yeah, that's.
You just don't, I don't know why I should, I just.
And a lot of things.
Takes up the brain space.
I mean, I don't know if you remember about a few, I don't know how many years ago, they used to have like at Christmas, they'd have a punch and everybody was invited at a tree, the kids could put stuff on the tree. You know, that kinda stuff to get people to know, okay, this is a really good thing and I think they need to get back with that.
I, I agree.
So just giving them money is not, I'd like to see some PR stuff to, so get everybody, okay, this is a great thing to have in town. And it's got the wagons in the back, you know, and the wagon, the whole thing like that, so.
So in the, as long as I've been around, which granted is nothing compared to a lot of other people. But as long as I've been around, the historic society stuff has always, have always had uh petition ballots. Uh and one of the things that's been said is that's far more appropriate. But if the point of doing it budget versus uh warrant article is for the PR of it rather than the make them come and tell their own thing about why they want it and like earn it. Uh then should we consider s- setting up and sponsoring that warrant article instead of them, or do you think it should still be petitioned?
That, I, I mean, I don't mind setting it up and then they.
Not that they're likely to have a problem getting their members to sign petition.
Right, but I think that, but I think their members should talk about it at town meeting, so people get the idea, you know.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So other than that, it's fine, if we wanna put, that's fine.
Which, if it's a petition warrant article, then they're supposed to speak to it.
Right, right, so that's, you know, but I would think that they would speak to it anyway, even if we put it on there. So it's, uh it's one way or the other, it's a good thing to have, as long as we can get them to speak, so.
Okay. I mean, I mean, I look at, I look at, I look at this, I look at five grand, we, so we were lucky, that's all, they, they need to keep the insurance up on it. So then I think to myself, yeah, I, 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 I'm, I guess I agree, I, I get what you're saying, you want. You don't wanna just give it to them in a, in a nice way, but you want them to, they, they're kinda forced to come out and talk about it.
Right, and it's good to have people who, everybody can, you know.
Let's, let's keep it there for now.
And I, I guess the, the other argument in favor of keeping it as a warrant article would be that, as far as I'm aware, all of the nonprofit organizations that we have donated to in the past are no longer there. So we don't have those items in our budget anymore, for example.
Well, we still have the cap.
There, well, there's things like cap, but that's more of a, we pay them for a service thing. Uh as opposed to a donation towards the soccer league and stuff like that. So we really don't have any of those donation items in the budget anymore.
So I make a motion to leave it as a warrant.
I don't know that we need a motion, but.
Yeah.
I think I'm just saying, okay, I kinda understand.
If that's the intent and if the board, we'll need to know if the board is gonna put the, the warrant article on or does it need to be? Do we need to go back to them and say, you'll need to prepare a petition?
We can put it on, I don't see any problem.
I think it's easy for us to do it, but just to keep with, unless it's gonna be a problem for them to get together to do it, which I doubt, but.
You'd like to just see them do it.
I think it makes more sense for them to do it as an outside organization that's nonprofit, to say, hey, we want this. And maybe it's not five thousand, maybe it's the actual expected bill for the insurance that's probably a little bit higher.
Or anybody can.
Whatever that is, if they present that at the town, I think that's far better than.
Yeah.
Okay, so like petition is what you're saying?
Yeah, okay, that sounds good.
And I think if it's going to be a warrant article, it should be by petition, okay?
Whew, all right. That's a long way to get five grand.
So. We didn't get five grand.
I know.
And it comes out of, it comes out of the overall budget tax base anyway, so, well, if people prove it.
That would be my only real fear, I would think that that wouldn't happen, but. And nothing else.
So let's. The.
Warrant for the Pillsbury Lake dam?
Well, that's gonna be the same as always.
Same thing, yeah, okay, all right.
The.
They should be almost finished with that.
Twenty-six.
When?
Twenty-six.
Oh, twenty-six, oh wow. That could happen a long time ago.
I really don't like the double hit of huge amounts coming from both the transfer station and the fire department at the same time.
No.
But if we need it, we need it. I'm, I guess the question would be, with a brand new one, do we need to replace the second one that quickly?
That's, would be my, that would be my token, because you're right.
Cause we've got two that.
That's right, that's right.
That are.
I mean, great, I think you have to have two.
Well, sorry, we've already got two.
You have to have two and there's certain things that he was saying we have to meet, but I was thinking kinda the same way you are. Let's, let's get this new one, I mean, granted, we're planning, planning, but let's not take a hit, see, and we're, the, you know, we gotta pay the dump thing or.
I mean, I'm perfectly fine with there being an increase, just let's, let's face it, it makes sense for there to be an increase so that, cause we're gonna need a new one. Uh I, the real question would be, would we really need it that, that soon? Or would another year or two be fine, in which case that number can be significantly lower?
That's what I.
Yeah, that sounds like a plan.
So I don't want to, like, I'm uncomfortable just overwriting the CIP on this, especially not knowing the figures that a- and the full details of what Emmett has told them and what's needed for certifications and requirements. But.
He, he didn't, he, he kinda.
Oh yeah, you were kinda there, right?
I was there, yeah.
All right.
Well, not for the CPI.
The CIP, yeah.
My CIP, oh, CIP, not the CPI, but anyway, I, I get, that's why when we were talking about it, this was sitting in my mind. And I don't even, this is just planning ahead and like I, I just said, like you just said, maybe this isn't the year to take the hit for it and maybe something we might wanna start setting aside for next year. So. I personally think that's, for this year, that we could be a lot lower. But there again, like, you know, he, his requirements are, he's, he's gotta keep things up to date, keep things running and, you know what I mean, there's, nothing's failing. But if you'd feel more comfortable kinda chatting with him, that'd be fine, too.
The, so we've got the balance that's sitting there.
Thirty-two, five, forty-eight.
But the, uh no, the fire department vehicles, emergency apparatus, the first red mark.
Oh.
Which is the five hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
This is, have, have we paid anything for the fire truck yet?
No, no.
Okay, so our current fire truck comes out of it.
Yeah, so like four hundred, right? Four hundred or something?
Yeah, it seems like four forty-two or something like that.
Okay, so if we know that it's in the four hundred range, then it's not like we have to put more in in order to be able to afford the current truck that we've ordered. I know that we're gonna need something for whenever the ambulance, uh the, the ambulance swap is actually available, so that will need to be there. But if we're looking at four hundred and twenty-something, that leaves still like a hundred and something in there. I.
I'll leave it at sixty-five hundred.
Sixty-five thousand.
I, I was thinking more, like, the, like, it's appropriate to increase it, especially if we're thinking it's gonna need to continue to be increased. But maybe we do, especially since we had to take the huge jump in the transfer station.
Yeah, right.
Though it looks like they're expecting them to have to do that again next year too.
I gotta get a handle on that.
Maybe it makes sense to, since it's not an immediate need, to do a hundred instead of a hundred and twenty-five. Is then we are increasing it, just not quite as much, we will have to increase it further in further years. Uh however, we should at that point know, for example, the bridge and culvert stuff, whether there's money left over, uh and or just not have to fund it at that point, because we will have done both bridges by then. Or I should say, we will have done White Plains and then it will, we should know exactly how much is left for the engineering for uh clothespin by the end of next year, so.
I, I'd even say a little bit less than that.
What was that?
I'd take more like seventy-five to eighty, buddy. But that's just my money.
So you said seventy-five, I said a hundred, what did you say?
I didn't say anything.
Oh, okay, what do you think, Adam?
I'll go in the middle. So. Eighty, how about eighty?
Sure?
Sure.
Okay.
Go eighty.
What, you, you said seventy-five or eighty-five?
No, well, I said seventy to eighty.
Oh, okay, so, okay, eighty. All right, board consensus then is eighty.
Cause they were upping it, he said, or something, like.
Yes, we are.
So we've got a.
So that's an increase in capital reserves of thirty thousand five hundred, eleven eighty-one. And an increase in expendable trust of seven thousand, eleven five.
Yep.
That's a huge difference. So highways and roads, uh they had suggested go back down to a hundred.
Well, I don't think they, I think they kinda wanted to go across the board, we were going with the numbers that was recommended last year. So it doesn't account for what you actually put in it last year.
Well, they're recommending that, that be what's there.
Right, but I wasn't aware you put a hundred and twenty-five in last year or I would have reflected it.
Ah, okay.
Well, we did put a hundred and twenty-five.
Let's see, highways and roads, we used a hundred and twenty-seven, we put in a hundred and twenty-five, there's about a hundred and sixty-five left. That's more of the construction-y style, because we've got preservation out of the expendable funds. And the construction one would have been higher because we did the Pillsbury Lake work, which was a construction versus preservation.
Oh, the road work down there.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's why that would have been higher as opposed to preservation, which normally would have been higher. What's your feeling on this, having, like, you're the most expert in this field?
To me, a little bit, don't take this, not that I can't, it gets confusing, it's pulling, but I don't. I do think things are gonna be up, but also is the limit on what he is able to do in the timeframe of doing it, so. Cause we have, we do have balances in all of them, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Saying that, right?
Yeah.
So I've, I didn't, when we were talking about it, I thought, I think, I think, you know, cause he kinda, it wasn't, wasn't against what Emmett wanted, you know what I mean?
No.
So I think, I think I would leave it alone.
That would be fine, okay. And let's, let's see, the road preservation.
Have I got a crest of all?
Road preservation has, road preservation has a fair amount in it, uh and is also expecting to keep that, so. I guess my question would be, I know that part of the original set of I guess expected work time would have been for, for example, White Plains. Or for supporting uh clothespin bridge and, and the, the stuff around it and leading into it. And if that's being bid out for White Plains, and it's not happening yet for clothespin bridge, that actually frees up a lot more time for Emmett to do other things that wouldn't come from bridges and culverts. Which we also, I mean, not all of it was Emmett, but we also spent fifty grand and, and change. So.
So, so just help me here, the road preservation, there's a balance of four hu- four hundred and thirty-nine thousand. And he utilized ninety-eight, that's not even come out of this number, right?
Well, this, yeah, so that's how much was used, but i- if you look at it based on a kind of like a time and how much he, like, if all of what he did was road preservation this time, you can take, I'm gonna guess about half of the bridges and culverts, because the other half would have been engineering. You can take highways and roads, which was the construction down by Pillsbury Lake, uh and you can take road preservation. And so that dollar amount is basically all of his time that we have spent. And so if you put it all together, then that's where you get roughly how much we had to do this year.
And road preservation, does pavement?
To continue to do.
Yeah, does pavement come out of road, road preservation? It does, right, yeah.
It can. It can come out of either, depending on the project.
Yeah, I mean, I.
So.
I.
I certainly don't think we should, we should shrink it, road preservation. Even though it's got a fair amount of balance.
Right, yeah, yeah, but what you, what you, what is bothering you is, is, is shrinking the highway.
Well, I'm just trying to think about the, the total.
What is the difference between high road, highway, I know we, I've probably been explaining this, but between the highway and roads and the preservation?
The, the short version.
Oh, thank God.
Is that the preservation is when we fix a road or, or put topping on a road so it doesn't break.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the highways and roads is construction.
Meaning like digging them out?
When we dig it all out and replace it, for example, the way we did Deer, uh Deer Meadow.
Right. Yeah.
A couple of years ago, and the way that we did, um.
It's still, it's still a little tricky, cause you know, culverts, swallowing culverts and usually when you do that and you dig out the road, you're replacing culverts, I did, you know what I mean?
Well, but like, yeah, not just like a patch chug for a culvert or something, but like the road road.
Yeah.
So.
I think we should go with what he.
I think it's probably okay, but I just wanted to make sure that we talked about the numbers, especially knowing that there's plenty. I think it's probably okay, but I just wanted to make sure that we talked about the numbers, especially knowing that there's plenty that.
Could be done.
Is wanted to be done and can be caught up on, uh, and that.
But even this year, didn't have a lot of.
If he's not doing those projects, then he'll have more time to do it.
True, but this year he didn't really have any of those big projects. So.
I mean, he was babying some of our bridges, but.
Yeah, 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 but I mean, that.
I mean, every other, every other week, he was down repairing a hole in Christian Bridge until he inflated it and paved it, so.
Yeah, that was nice, yeah.
Anyhow, I, still.
So.
Okay.
But, yeah.
That, I, you could suggest what you'd like, I feel like I wanna leave it alone.
Perfect, I mean, that, that's why I asked you.
Yeah.
You understand it more.
Well, I can't, you know, when, i- if, if he was lacking, like, holy crap, we got to the end, and he could have done so much more, and he just didn't have the money. Then we would need to, but I think, I think, I think you got, every, he did, I think he did a good job in budgeting what he needed, and he kept it under it, and, and that's a lot to be said for Emmett for being able to do that, and yet still maintaining and doing some stuff to the roads.
Mm-hmm. I just don't wanna get us stuck in a position where we end up that way.
Right.
Well, we should have taken care of this, but because of funding, we didn't schedule time.
Okay, so the only other thing I could say to you is maybe you'd have to ask him again, cause.
Yeah.
I, I just, you know, I feel like he knows what he can get done.
I mean, if he told them that that's fine, and, and they sent it, and, and you're.
Well, like, he pointed out, he said, I could, I could go, you know, it's, to me, a lot of the big chunk is paving.
Yeah.
You know, his actual hourly rate of removing and reconstructing, that's about the same, so that, that in his mind, that budget's there. I think what he's concerned about is moving forward is what is the, you know, uh, other costs, like paving and culverts and stuff like that, that can create, um, a difference in his overall usage of money.
Yeah, because the way.
Cause I look at paving.
Yeah, and the paving.
Paving can just take money so quickly.
Yeah, right, can just jump up, and, and you don't have a choice, really, I mean, you have, you have to do it, you have to do it.
So, but I mean, if you feel like you would like more in there, you, you have a gut that tells you, I'm not arguing with you about that either. Cause this is, this is a little bit of a gut thing, too.
To, to some degree.
You know, I mean, some of it's history, some of it's, and some of it's just guessing.
Well, being that we have a pretty good balance, um, I'm not going to try to step on anybody and their projections. So I think I'll leave it alone, but I wanted to make sure we had the, the conversation about it. Um, cause I definitely want as much taken care of as.
Possible.
As, as our road agent has time to do, so that, uh, we are in good shape and stay that way.
Yeah.
Cause we have decent roads, and we have some nice roads, and we'd like them to stay that way.
You mean, when you, when you, after you come off the city of Concord Road? I wonder what their funding looks like.
They leave those roads alone till the last.
It, it depends on where they think is important.
Well.
And how many people.
They, they found it the specialist's place ever for their, their roads.
Depends who lives where.
Yeah. That's, that's for sure.
Let's see.
Cause, cause you do the. And you go, oh, we're not Concord anymore.
So I think that, uh, basically covers budget.
You have, um, next time, and I'm sorry, I don't have the highway, we talked about highway, and it was, we had a lot of.
Yeah, we had changed stuff, and I know you were talking with, uh, the state and the auditors about what the best way to do it is, and.
And so I think we're, I think we've, I've got a handle on that now, so I can, I can do that. The town clerk had a few revisions to her budget, basically, it was just switching things from category and other category to her category, and adding things together.
Like some moderators really suggested.
So, um, the other budgets, you need to have the job reviews, which you'll have mine anyway next time. Um, and I will remind the police chief.
It feels funny that we, it feels like we just did that.
You what?
You did.
It was like, yeah, you did, right? You didn't redo it, yeah. But you wanted to get it on a yearly.
Yeah, so I think, and I think it would be a good time, um, at the next meeting, when it's the department head meeting, especially for the highway budget.
Mm.
With, with Emmett here.
Okay.
Now, that's the only ones that I think that, I don't believe you had questions on any of the others. You did, tell me, but.
And at that point, so hopefully after the next meeting, we can say that this is the proposed budget, that we are adopting to take to the budget hearing.
Perfect, you mean, like Washington DC?
Fireworks.
Then we need to work on, well, you've already, um.
But you may have to make that note.
The warrant articles.
Yeah, you better hurry up.
Trying.
If you get a phone call, what's her number? I can tell you my sister-in-law's tricks. My sister-in-law said that she was gonna have her one and only, cause we've got four kids, and then one boy, and my father-in-law died on, his birthday was December sixth. She says, I will have this baby on December sixth, and she did. She's the only woman I ever known that she decides what day it's gonna happen, and it does.
Wow.
I won't tell you what she does sometimes, but, you know, maybe a four-wheeler ride. But I always thought, wow.
For, for, for me, it was because my, uh, my mom's car got smashed in the winter.
Oh. That's why, you, you arrived, me?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's why, so who was part of that? Mi- good old man winner or another car?
Yes.
Yeah.
My, my mom knew how to stop. Other cars, not so much.
Yeah. It's not, isn't that scary? It is scary.
Uh, all right, so that leaves us with, uh, abatement requests for new business.
This one is the abatement request that we received, that, um, it was more of a select board decision rather than send it in for, um, to be looked at by the assessors. The taxpayer had a mobile home moved off their property in July. Um, they are asking that it be taken off their twenty-twenty-two assess in, um, value. Um, the state law is how properties stand as of April first. Um, so I guess I'm looking for a decision from the board, if you wanted to remove the, they gave you an appraisal for sixty-five thousand, but on the property card, it's only thirty-something thousand, so that would be a little bit of a difference, but I guess I will say, I hate to kind of veer from the state law.
And so the.
Well, plus you said a precedence.
The state law is saying that we should or should not do the abatement.
Uh, the, the state law says, selectmen of each town shall annually make a list of all the poles, and shall take an inventory of all the state liable to, to be taxed in such town as of April one.
And they moved it when?
Um, July.
April, May, June, July, um, so that's at least another three months.
July nineteenth.
So, yeah, three and a half months. I don't see any reason to not follow the state law.
Well, and there again, it went to, it, wouldn't we all like to make exceptions for all kinds of things, but you start doing that, and I just, I could see.
Pulling your hair out.
Yeah, so I would agree, and it's not that we don't wanna give them the payment, it's just, you gotta go along with what you're kind of going to do, too.
Well, you know, property assessments, um, I don't know what word I wanna use, but it is kind of antiquey how it happens. And it's not up to the minute that people are used to.
Yeah.
And I, if it were me, I'd probably think the same way.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it never hurts to ask.
Yeah.
And, and I, yeah, if I were to do the abatement, it would also be for the value of the property card, not.
Yeah, exactly.
But, okay.
So are you going to ma- make a motion that you're gonna deny the abatement? I, I would like if you would.
Okay, and which, uh, I don't wanna say a name, so how do we appropriately do that?
Property.
I would say that you would deny an abatement for map. Uh, stand by, please.
Oh, map six lot ninety-six.
Okay. Fair enough.
I second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hey, Dee's got his pen ready.
I, I was, and it's like, oh, well, okay, I guess we're not doing this. Are there any other abatements?
We do have a bunch of other.
There are some, I've got them in another section, but I can pull them out for you immediately.
But wouldn't they be falling under the same situation?
Well, no, these ones are different, cause a lot of them are campgrounds, I know.
Oh, the campgrounds.
Would you like to go over these?
I'll go over them.
Okay.
That's fine.
Good, while you do that, I'm.
It's some Karen's asking for.
One of them are bills that were listed to JMJ Resort Properties, so the camper wasn't removed before the December bills come out. So the campground owner doesn't get built for individual lots, he gets built for a whole thing. So those shouldn't have been issued, and I put notes in them, so they'll be removed next year. One is a camper was registered, and the assessor had it listed as unregistered, so I, sometimes that happens when I receive the registration after we get the, the list from Joe DePrimo, and these are for people that have left the campground. Is the last one, it's kinda hard to.
Camp, camps can be.
So the recommendation would be to abate all of these, correct?
Yes.
That one is, is they're not there anymore, and I don't know how we would get the money from them.
That's a good problem.
The last one is actually an abatement that was an issue I found before the bills went out, however, we couldn't get it fixed, or we would have had to delay our tax warrant. So there was a subdivision that occurred earlier in the year, and a portion of that was taken out of current use, it shouldn't have been, it should still be in current use, so that's the difference.
Holy co, that's the difference.
How much was that? I think that's the biggest, yeah.
It's just the biggest.
What's that gonna do about it?
That won't do anything, actually, cause that comes out of overlay.
But that's, that makes sense.
Yeah, it doesn't. Make it, I mean, it makes it.
I mean, current use versus not, it's gotta be at least ten plus, so that makes sense.
It went from the big bill to being only forty-eight dollars.
Yep.
And that was the April first thing again.
Well, no, that one, the current use one was because of a subdivision.
All right, does that cover all of the, it makes sense?
You've got them all.
Yep. Thank you. Then moves us on to correspondence.
Um, the correspondence, we have, um, we had one resignation from Patricia Alacqua, from the trustees of trust funds. Uh, Judy Jones's term is gonna be up in March, and she's told me that she will not be running again. So, um, we need at the moment to fill one position on trustees of trust funds, cause Judy is still on trustees.
How do you fill that?
You appoint somebody until the next election.
They appoint somebody.
Yeah, they appoint someone, they, they come to you, and they suggest who they want, and then you appoint them.
Oh, right, that was because it was treasurer last time, they appointed the treasurer.
It's the election that, yeah. Yeah.
We, we appointed a member, they appointed a treasurer.
And this is the one thing that it's appointed to the term of what the term was, rather than the next election, one of the only, um.
Yeah, cause they run different, yeah, they run different, yeah.
Positions that you set, yeah. So I guess we're looking to find someone willing to serve on that.
So we're looking for someone to join the trustee of trust funds post case, and also looking for someone to run for trustees of trust funds on the ballot.
We, um, I, we're gonna try and make it a little easier for them this year, um, by not having so many motions for the trustees to deal with.
That's what we've been working on, correct?
And we've, um, we've talked about it, and thought about a lot of angles on it, and we've figured out how we can do it. And, uh, I think it will make, I think it'll make a lot of sense, both of them. Every time the trustees, they don't have money in their checking account, so they have to go to the bank, and they have to, they're in CDs, they have to break the CD, although the bank allows them to do it without a penalty, but they have to break the CD, they get a new CD for the remainder, it's.
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of.
Every time we ask for tax, yep.
And so we're thinking maybe every quarter, we'll review what we've paid out of the general fund and ask for it to be reimbursed.
And so the, that new, uh, process and order line items will be reflected in the budget when you send it out to us, correct?
Um, it won't affect the bottom line, because it will basically be in the, um, I'm not sure if it's the asset or liability section, or not in the expense section, it will be a due-to-do from, so if it's, it'll be like an accounts receivable.
But it does mean that we won't have the, uh, changes that we've talked about in, for example, highways and roads, because we don't need to change.
It does mean that you, I, I think it's a better way to do it this way, and not, and not the other, and that way you won't have to raise appropriate more in that lines.
Perfect.
And I think that would, I think people would understand that a little better. And I think it would be, I think the trustees will like it, and I, I know that I'll like it, because it's.
It only took us fifty tries to get here, but we got here.
Well, you know, if it took fifty-one, we'd.
So basically, um, I was writing a list of some people I should have had a call, but, um, so then they come be, the trustees come before us, right?
What I would do, maybe quarterly, I would come to you and say, these bills were paid out of the trust funds, and then you'd have the bills to review.
Yeah, okay.
And then you would make, and then you'd make a motion, so in other words, it would be similar to what you do now.
Yeah, okay.
And then it would be a total, and I would give it to Mary Welch and say, you know, here are the bills, here's the total, and, and she could, get us a check and pay it to the town.
That, yeah, the short version of the concept is that, uh, basically the town has a line item that acts as a buffer. So when, for example, Emmett comes with all these bills, rather than us making the motions to get it from the trust funds.
Yeah.
And then having to do this every single time we have a meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, the town pays it, and then at the end of the quarter, we say, here's the list of them, please reimburse the town for this much. And so it makes it faster for the town to turn around and process it to our vendors, whether that's Emmett or others.
Yeah.
Uh, when dealing with trust funds, and it also makes it so there's less work for the trust funds to do, you know, because then they have to go quarterly.
Yeah, sounds planned, sounds like a plan to me.
The next item is that there was a resignation from the Warner River Advisory, um, Warner River Local Advisory Committee. Mr. Moran resigned, um, I had given you a copy of the email that I got from Megan Rafferty, the Rivers and Lakes Program Assistant, and then also a copy of the Advisory Committee Chair, Michelle Tremply, thanking, uh, Mr. Moran for his work in that aspect. Uh, we did have a gentleman come into the office this afternoon suggesting that he was going to send in a, someone he might advise you to appoint to that committee.
Oh, really?
I thought he was saying that, uh, he was gonna send us something saying that, uh, they needed more people, not that he had a person.
Oh, I thought he had a person, sorry.
I'd, I'd love it if he had a person.
Yeah, me too.
But either way, um, as mentioned here, uh, so, uh, they need help to identify up to three individuals interested in serving on the committee representing the town of Webster. Uh, and currently, we only have one. Uh, so if you are interested in the Warner River Local Advisory Committee, and how to manage the, the Warner River, and keep it nice and clean, and fun, and safe, and all that, uh, please come let us know. And or the Conservation Commission, cause they can certainly recommend people as well. So that's all the correspondence I had. All right. Is it worth mentioning what I handed you?
Okay, I'm sure that, give me a clue.
This is your age, you know.
So I, I guess I'll just, uh, say it, um, the town had been served previously, uh, with.
Oh, okay.
Um, the letter for the, uh.
It's the loss regarding.
The, the current, the current. The, the current, the current lawsuit or court case, uh, that has been submitted, uh, based on us following recommendations from the Land Department. That more recently, uh, I got a copy that was served to me as well. It appears that that's serving me as a notice that the town is involved, as opposed to serving me individually. I've handed that off and letting our legal counsel deal with it, cause he's already dealing with it for the town. And please correct me if I'm wrong, I've been told that I do not have to do anything in regard to.
You don't.
Uh, but.
The town had an obligation to, to follow up with information, which we have done, and the lawyer has done that.
And they were already doing that, so, but I felt it was worth, uh, mentioning for the record that they served me as well, probably just because I'm chair of the Land Department.
I, I think it's more or less common to have the, the board chair serve as well.
I mean, it came later than the towns, but like a week, week and a half, something like that.
Yeah, cause we had it, uh, but. He came in originally, he wanted just to give it to Russ, and so I, you know, I, I coaxed him, I, Russ wasn't.
Coaxed and strings.
So I, I coaxed him a little bit, I said, well, I could work here, you know.
All right.
He was really nice, dude.
Uh, anybody else have more correspondence to mention?
No, not me.
All right, uh, so that brings us to public comment, of which there are none left.
Keep it down, keep it down.
And so then that moves us on to motions and approvals. Is there any other topics that the board believes need to be added?
No. Approve some minutes?
Um, so, meeting minutes, we have two sets of minutes, one is November twenty-one, and. The other one is December fifth.
Oh, my God, I can't even read it, my loss.
So I guess I'll take them in order, uh, we waited to have you here for the one that was yours.
I saw that, cause I actually read them all.
And, uh.
Fully, fully, I usually do, but, I, cause I wasn't asked one of them.
Uh, any comments or corrections to the November meeting minutes?
Looks good to me.
All right, so I would move that we accept the meeting minutes from November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, as written.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that brings us to December fifth, uh, I have a few corrections on that one. Most, uh, I don't think any, I don't think any of them change anything of their, uh, like type of stuff. So page one, line fifteen, uh, ah, yes, it should be treasurer. Treasurer is just a little different. Uh, page one.
He's a treasurer, though.
Line thirty-one, uh. Said heart, uh, wait, where did I?
Yeah, heart disease.
Heart, heart straining?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, heart, H A R T disease.
The wrong kind. Uh, page one, line thirty-eight, uh, was sign is incorrect, instead of a site. At the end of the line, a site for the police department should be assigned for the police department. Uh, page four, line six. It's this one. Page four? Oh, I think that's, that's page five, that's why it doesn't look right.
He looked into the.
Uh, page four, line six, uh, should be, will look into the charter further. Page four, line twenty-seven, uh, there's an extra way at the end of my name.
Wow, I know why I wrote that.
Uh, and then.
One is sufficient.
No one wants more of me. Uh, and the last would be, uh, page five, line nineteen, and I think the phrasing would be better as had suggested she come with. So it would be recalled that the board had suggested she come with recommendations for. New members to be appointed.
I can make those changes happen.
So those are my, uh, changes that I noticed, does anyone else have directions or changes to address?
You do a great job, Dave.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I read it thoroughly, and I missed all that.
Sometimes I do, sometimes I don't.
Oh, my God, my assistant gets her red pen out.
I am just sad they won't be in the permanent record for future generations to see my type of.
My extra way way.
And then way, 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 way.
All right, so I would move that we accept the December five meeting minutes as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, that takes care of our minutes, which moves us on to motions and signing.
Okay, I have no motions for you.
Oh, my God.
Wow.
Um, although I do have signing of the document, are you ready?
I have my.
This is the deed for the property that we're selling with the garage on it, um, we have received the money.
And did it, did it go with the house?
Um, it went to the people that bought the house.
Yeah, so I thought, okay.
Yeah, so I need select board members to sign, I will witness it.
Make sure we got more for that than I would have thought.
I'm gonna be extra critical of my, uh, watching you sign things.
Here's yours, here's your section.
Oh, my God.
You gonna make me do it three times?
Yes.
I hate you so much.
Be nice, be nice.
Well, you know.
Next time he wants a little time off, I'll remember this.
I'm gonna note that.
I really wish I could just use my stamp.
It's okay, he's gotta witness it three times for each of us, yeah.
He's only got one thing he's gotta write, he'll write like that.
Oh, no, there's three witness lines.
My job is not as easy as you think.
Just thinking, our, someday, our autographs will be worth a lot of money.
Yeah.
No one will be able to tell it's mine, so.
That's true, I'm the he, yeah.
I think the D and the H in there.
You're DH then, and I'm a huh.
All right, do we have any else to sign?
No.
All right. So that concludes signing and motions, and. Is there any non-public or further business?
No.
No.
I would move that we exit and close the meeting at eight, ten.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.